All right, time for convening having arrived. The Senate will come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to our special session. Would ask that all senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversation as our special session is going to come to order. Pursue it to the proclamation by His Excellency the Governor. The time for convening the General Assembly has arrived and I hereby call the special session of the Senate to order. At this time, I would ask that unauthorized visitors exit the chamber at this time. Secretary will read a proclamation from the Governor convening the special session of the Georgia General Assembly.
By the Governor of the State of Georgia, our proclamation convening the General Assembly of Georgia in special session. Whereas Article Five, Section Two, Paragraph Seven of the Constitution of the State of Georgia grants to the Governor the power to convene a special session of the General Assembly by proclamation stating and thereby limiting the purposes of the special session and whereas the regular session of the 2018 General Assembly adjourned Sunday Day on March twenty-nine, 2018. And whereas the Governor has determined that certain purposes warrant the convocation of a special session and therefore by virtue of the power and authority conferred upon me by the Constitution of Georgia, I Nathan Deal, Governor of the State of Georgia, do hereby convene the General Assembly of this state in special session on Tuesday, November thirteen, 2018 for the purposes and only those purposes specified as follows. One, to amend Act Number Three-O-One of the 2018 Legislative Session, the Fiscal Year 2019 Appropriations Act, to provide emergency funding to state agencies and local governments responding to Hurricane Michael, as well as to provide for economic development and rebuilding. And two, to ratify the executive order dated July thirty, 2018, and numbered zero-seven dot thirty dot eighteen dot oh-one in the official records of the Office of the Governor and provide for general law regarding taxation related to the subject of that executive order and for general law regarding taxation as it relates to recovery and rebuilding from the impact of Hurricane Michael, given under my hand and the great seal of the State of Georgia at the City of Atlanta on the ninth of day of November, 2018. Signed, Nathan Deal, Governor.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everyone to our special session. You all look wonderful and relaxed and ready for this five-day session to occur. Many of you thought that you were done with me, and I thought I was done with you. But we are back in a special session and it will be a good time that we will have together over the next five days and welcome to this special session. It is now time for the morning roll call. Time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse at this time? Chair recognizes Senator from the thirty-fourth.
On, I'd like to excuse the Senator from the thirty-third. He is out of town.
Out of town?
On business that he just couldn't get back timely enough. He will, he will, he'll be back.
All right, very good. Today and tomorrow. Can you do that? I think the Senator wishes to excuse the Senator from the thirty-third for today and tomorrow, which will be reflected on both days. Is there objection? Without objection, the Senator has been excused. Chair now recognizes the very distinguished Senator, the Majority Leader, excuse me, Majority Whip. Well, in question, but, you know.
Here we go again. Welcome back, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for Senators from the fourteenth and the sixteenth to be excused for business outside the Capitol.
Fourteenth and sixteenth, without objection, the two Senators will be excused. Any other motions to excuse? Would ask that all senators, please take your seats, cease all audible conversation Chair, no. Chair recognizes the present pro temp of the body, the Senator from the forty-ninth. as we prepare the chamber for our morning devotion.
Mr. President, I move to excuse the Senator for the twenty-ninth for business outside
And we have a very special chaplain that is with us today.
the Capitol.
Twenty-ninth, without objection, Senator from the twenty-ninth will be excused. And before we get started, I would like for each of you to join me in the pledge of the allegiance to our flag and the state flag. Any other motions to excuse?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
Senators, please signify your presence by voting the a switch. The Secretary will unlock the machine.
which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
Today, we have an individual who has been a dear personal friend of mine for many, many years that I've asked to come to be our Chaplain of the Day, Dr. Harrison Brady. And this is an individual who is remarkable in many, many different ways. First of all, most people may not recognize this, and I didn't even recognize it, but he taught himself to play seven different instruments by the time he was twelve years of age. He graduated from high school at the ripe old age of fourteen and made numerous television appearances, including different ones from Nickelodeon and so on and so forth. Was accepted to Morehouse College at the tender age of fifteen, which is pretty remarkable. He obviously has a doctorate degree in medicine from American International School of Medicine. He is an entrepreneur and is the founder and CEO of Brady Preparatory Academy here in Atlanta. He is also the CEO of Education System Management. An individual who is a person who loves to give and to make significant investments. He has done that in his professional life, in business, but also as a pastor as well. The young twelve-year-old from the ghetto projects in the inner city of Atlanta, Georgia, who dared to have achieved what his mind could only conceive. Dr. Brady became a man of many titles. Some would say life coach, educator, pastor, doctor, author. However, we and he is fond of the only one which is a servant. He is a life coach, entrepreneur, philanthropist with an anointed message with God to reach a world in need of change. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Harris Brady.
Well, I am excited to be here today. I want to first of all, give honor to God who's ahead of my life. I also want to honor this great President of this great body, my friend and my brother, Lieutenant Governor Casey Kegel. I'd be remiss if I didn't call out my, my stumping ground, as they would say, District Forty-four, Senator Davenport. I pastor a church, now faith, is in Atlanta and in Rex, Georgia. We also border with District Thirty-four. And so I'm just excited, this is my first time here. I was chatting with some of my colleagues as I came and I said, you know, this is a five-minute deal, so I guess I have to make it quick. And, you know, preachers typically have five closings. So, at least. So, I'm going to become one of the frozen chosen today and I'm going to knock it out the box with just one closing. And so I close. I want to say also, thank you. I didn't receive, I wasn't expecting a per diem check and typically, a southern preacher's, we don't usually get paid until we preach. I'm getting, you know, I'm getting to like this thing here at the General Assembly. You guys are looking for a full-time chaplain, I may have to put in the application. But listen, I just want to submit something to you. I know that this is an interesting time, a time of change, a time of major change, a time of transition. The Bible speaks, you know, that there's a season for everything. And so as we close out this season in our great state of Georgia, which I believe to be the best, one of the greatest, if not the greatest, state in the United States of America, is Georgia. And so I believe that God is doing something miraculous and I think that we will see that our latter will be greater than our beginning. And I want to speak just briefly on the topic, love, love. Love for God, love for each other, and love for God's people. We're gathered here because of and should be love. We're gathered here for and because of and it should be love. You know, Aristotle states, educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all. It's no education at all. I appreciate the accolades and that was a very great bio. I was listening, I was like, oh, wow, I did. But none of that makes any sense to me if there's no love in my heart. This great body has wisdom, has strength, has power to do above and beyond, to change the trajectory of where we are right now in this great body here. But with no love, we can do damage. So today, I want to caution you that as you make your decisions, make those decisions with love. Love for the people of Georgia. Love for the children of Georgia. Love. There's a parable that I was reminded of in our Governor's, his previous state of the state. And the parable that Governor Deal spoke of was that parable that was passed down through, quote-unquote, ancient Israel. He said, there was an older man who went out one day and planted a tree in his garden. A neighbor passing by out and saw what he was doing, stopped and shook his head and began to laugh and said, oh, man, you're a fool. What good will it do you to plant a tree now that you're so old? Governor Deal went on ahead to speak and he said, you know, the man said, you may not live long enough to be able to sit under the shade of that tree or enjoy its fruits. The old man rose up from his knees, looked at the neighbor in the eyes, and replied, I'm not planting this tree for me. I'm planting it for those who come after me. Someday, they will come here during the heat of the day and be cooled by the shade of the tree. When I was a small child, I could eat fruit because of those who planted the trees before me. I am not required to do the same for the next generation. It pricked my spirit when I was listening to the Governor because that parable speaks to us today. I look unto you in the spirit of the parable and I say unto you, old man, old man, why are you planting the tree? You're planting the tree today for the next five days, not for yourself, but for those to come. As you plant your trees and your seed today, beloved brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, don't forget about that mother who stands in the midst of a single wide trailer with two boys, struggling to make ends meet. Don't forget as you plant your seeds, to pray for help and for strength for those kids down the street who may not have what your kids, what my children have been blessed to have. The citizens two blocks down who are laden with every affliction of drugs, drug abuse, mental illness, just two blocks from the greatest place in Georgia, the powerhouse, the capital. Those who cannot speak for themselves, please, please plant seeds for them. You know, the scripture says, Jesus was walking and I'm closing. I feel like having church in here, so I'm going to go ahead and close. He asks a question, he says, who do men, Governor, he says, who do men say I am? He said, well, you know, some say you're Elijah, some say you're, some say you're this, some say. He said, no, 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 no. I want to know, who do you say I am? And then Peter stood up and he said, thou art Christ, Son of the living God. Flesh and blood have not revealed this unto you, but my Father, which is in heaven, and upon this rock I will build my church, and the gates of hell shall not prevail. What does that mean? That means that when you are planted as a tree by the rivers of water, you will not be moved. You will not be moved. How do you tie this in, Brady? I tie this in with one word, old man. Old man, why are you planting that tree? Because I have love. Love for those who will come after me. Love for those who will be affected. Love for those who are affected. Love. Love that covers a multitude of sin. Love that heals. Love that delivers. Love. My scripture reading in my closing was found in the Book of Corinthians, just so that I could make my check valid. Because you asked for a preacher, I'll give you a scripture. The Book of Corinthians says, if I speak in tongues of men or of angels, but do not have love, I am only a surrounding gong or clinging cymbal. If I, if I, if I have the gift of prophecy and can fathom all mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have faith that can move mountains, watch this, but do not have love, I am nothing. If I give all I have, all I possess to the poor, and give all my body to hardship that I may boast, but do not have love, I gain nothing. Love is patient, love is kind, love is not envy, love does not boast, it is not proud, it does not dishonor others, it does not self, it is not self-seeking, it is not easily angered, it keeps no record of wrongs. Love does not delight in evil, but rejoices with truth. It always protects, it always protects, it always protects, always trusts, always hope, always perseveres. Hear this now. Love never fails. Where there are prophecies, they will cease. Where there are tongues, they will still, they will be stilled. Where there is knowledge, it will pass away, for we know in part and we prophesy in part. But when completeness comes, what is in part disappears. When I was a child, I talked like a child. Old man! I thought as a child, I reasoned like a child. I became a man, I put away childish things. For now, we see only a reflection as in a mirror. Then we shall see face to face. Now I know in part. Then I shall know fully, even as I am fully known. And now these three remain, faith, hope, and what? Love. But the greatest of these is love. I conclude. Plato says, wise men speak because they have something to say. Fools, because they have to say something. Let us stand. Old man, old man, why are you planting that tree today? Because of those who are to come. I laid my life down today, not for my own, but for those who cannot speak for themselves. We speak for them. We speak for those who cannot speak. We seek for those who cannot see. Old man, plant your seed so that people can live and live more abundantly. Father, we thank you. We give you praise today. At ten fifty-seven on November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in front of this great body of senators, we give you praise just for who you are. I pray that today sparks and ignite people to change their ways, that whatever comes into this house, Lord, let it be touched by you. I speak and I pray over every Senator in this, in this house. Those who believe in you and those who don't, Lord, I thank you for them. I thank you that you caused them to be in this place and that at this transition, we bless you for the President of this house. Lord God, we bless you for twelve years of his service. We thank you that we've strived and God, as he continues to plant those trees, God, I pray that this body who remains here continues to plant, continues to take forth the call, knowing that it is not because of their paychecks that they're sitting in this place, but it is because they have a calling by you, a calling, a charge to keep, and a God to glorify by serving your people. We give you praise today on this special session, God. Touch our Governor. God, touch those who have been, those who have been distressed and displaced through the hurricane. We know that all things work together for the good of them that love the Lord and that are called according to your purpose. Now we speak to those and we say, peace, be still. Lord, rebuild. Rebuild our places that have been torn down like never before. Today, we thank you and today, we start this session in your name. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray and we thank you. Amen and amen. I thank you that you caused them to be in this place, and that at this transition, we bless you for the president of this house. Lord God, we bless you for twelve years of his service. We thank you that we've strived, and God, as he continues to plant those trees, God, I pray that this body who remains here continues to plant, continues to take forth the call, knowing that it is not because of their paychecks that they're sitting in this place, but it is because they have a calling by you, a calling, a charge to keep, and a God to glorify by serving your people. We give you praise today on this special session, God. Touch our governor. God, touch those who have been, uh, those who have been distressed and, and displaced through the hurricane. We know that all things work together for the good of them that love the Lord and that are called according to your purpose. Now we speak to those and we say, "Peace, be still." Lord, rebuild. Rebuild our places that have been torn down like never before. Today we thank you, and today we start this session in your name. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray and we thank you. Amen and amen.
If I could have the Senate's attention for just a moment, um, we would like to introduce our Doctor of the Day, and to do so, it's my honor now to call upon the distinguished senator from the thirty-second, who actually gets a special honor in introducing someone that she sleeps with at night.
Thank you, Governor. It's my pleasure to introduce to you our Doctor of the Day, my husband of thirty-two years, Dr. Tom Haltem. Tom was born and raised in Natchez, Mississippi. He attended Millsaps College and Ole Miss Med School. He and I met in Louisville, Kentucky, when he was a resident in emergency medicine and I was a resident in orthopedic surgery. After moving to Atlanta in nineteen eighty-six, Tom worked in the emergency department at several area hospitals, including Cobb General, Wendy Hill, Saint Joe's, and North Fulton. He currently works at med posts in East Cobb, where he's the go-to doctor for our community. He's been a leader in the Boy Scouts and is an active member of the Medical Association of Georgia's Medical Reserve Corps. He also serves on the state's EMS Medical Directors Advisory Council. Tom and I have two adult kids, Sidney, who's finishing architecture grad school at Georgia Tech, and Marshall, who recently finished the master's program in mechanical engineering at Stanford University, and is now working for a startup in California. Tom's motto is to always put the patients first, and he's lived this throughout his career. You can ask Senator Donzella James if you don't believe me. If we all follow his lead and put our constituents first, we'll have great success. Please welcome Dr. Tom Haltem.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here, and I hope, uh, if you need me, you'll come down and see me. Uh, I would like to encourage you all to get a flu shot. As the CDC director recently remarked, the only thing that keeps him awake at night is another flu pandemic. We remember the end of World War One was also the Spanish Flu Pandemic, which killed more people worldwide than World War One and then World War Two. More than fifty million deaths. So please, get a flu shot, and I'm happy to be here, thank you.
If I could have the Senate's attention, we have a special recognition we would like to do, and the secretary will read a resolution.
Senate Resolution Five EX by Senator Walker the twentieth and others, a resolution recognizing commending Blackley County FFA members Louis Lumley, Seth Dubois, Tucker Falcons, and Jacob Smith for winning the FFA Agricultural and Technology Mechanical Systems Career Development Event at the ninety-first National FFA Convention and for other purposes. Whereas the National FFA Agricultural and Technical Mechanical Systems CDE is a competitive event that allows students to apply classroom knowledge to real-life situations, and to help students develop technical knowledge and an ability to work with others to solve complex agricultural problems. And whereas the Blackley County team of Louis Lumley, Seth Dubois, Tucker Falcons, and Jacob Smith won the National FFA Agricultural Technology and Mechanical Systems CDE at the ninety-first National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body recognize Blackley County FFA members Louis Lumley, Seth Dubois, Tucker Falcons, and Jacob Smith for winning the FFA Agricultural Technology and Mechanical Systems Career Development Event held at the ninety-first National FFA Convention, commend the team for the great pride it has brought to the citizens of Georgia, and to extend its members' best wishes for their continued success. That completes the reading of the resolution.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is therefore adopted. It is always a special treat when we have our friends with FFA that are present with us today, and certainly, uh, this is a wonderful group that we are very privileged and honored to be able to recognize in the, this august body of the Senate. Uh, at this time, traditionally, we would always have the senator from the fiftieth speak to, uh, resolutions regarding the FFA, but due to illness, um, and other problems, he's not going to be able to do that. So we have actually asked the senator from the twentieth to come and present and speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning. The older I get, I think it's easy to get cynical about, uh, young people and to get worried about the future and to just have sort of a negative attitude, uh, and the cure for that, for me, is to visit with the young folks in the blue and gold jackets. They always, uh, encourage me and inspire me and give me a lot of hope for the future, future of Georgia. And I'm proud today to be able to celebrate, uh, outstanding accomplishment of, uh, four young men from, uh, Blackley County High School that won the national championship for the FFA Agricultural Technology and Mechanical Systems Career Development Event. This is a big deal. So today we are honoring and celebrating Louis Lumley, raise your hand Louis, Seth Dubois, Tucker Falcons, and Jacob Smith. This same Blackley County FFA also won a national championship in forestry last year, not these same guys, but anyway, they got a strong program under the leadership of Dr. Walt Parks and their principal, Mr. Matt Gibbs. We're glad to have them with us today. Uh, the national winning team in this event completed seven agricultural mechanics activities. The four-person team solved, uh, let's see, the four, they solved problems and they built an ag product, and I'm really, really proud to present the Blackley County FFA Ag Technology and Mechanical Systems National Championship Team. Thank you.
Dr. Parks is going to say a word for us.
We would just like to express our thanks to this body for your support of the FFA Ag education and education in general, and on behalf of the Blackley County School System, we really appreciate our senators signing this bill here, and we thank y'all.
We have a couple, um, let me, let me go ahead and ask that senators, please come in and take your seats. Um, we want to have a moment of silence, uh, recognizing two individuals, um, at this time while we are waiting the resolution from the House. If I could ask that senators, please take your seats. Um, we have a resolution that we would like to read at this time, and the secretary will do so.
Senate Resolution Four EX by Senators Calzard and others, a resolution honoring and remembering the life of Honorable P. Harris Hines, former Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of the, of Georgia and for other purposes. Whereas it is with a heavy heart that the state of Georgia pays its final respects to the Honorable P. Harris Hines, a great legal mind and devoted public servant who dedicated more than four decades of his life to justice while serving on the bench. And whereas Chief Justice Hines began his illustrious legal career in nineteen seventy-four, when Governor Jimmy Carter appointed him to serve on the State Court of Cobb County, in succeeding decades, he served on the Cobb County Superior Court, and in nineteen ninety-five was appointed by Governor Zell Miller to the Supreme Court of Georgia, where he became Chief Justice in twenty sixteen. And whereas during his tenure on the Georgia Supreme Court, Chief Justice Hines earned a well-deserved reputation for his brilliant mind and astute legal acumen, while presiding over the court with a respectful and gracious temperament and handing down honorable and fair-minded, fair-minded decisions. And whereas known for his approachable and friendly demeanor, Chief Justice Hines was cherished by many for his infectious smile, warm and easygoing personality, and constant displays of kindness and compassion. And whereas, while we mourn the unexpected loss of a true leader who was the epitome of a gentleman, comfort can be gained in knowing how fortunate the citizens of this state are to have had such an inspiring and passionate leader. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body join together in honoring and remembering the life of Honorable P. Harris Hines, express their deepest regret at his passing, and extend their most sincere condolences to his family. That completes the resolution.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. For all of us who had the great privilege of knowing, uh, the Chief Justice and developing a wonderful relationship with him, his personality was one that was so endearing, a person who, uh, big smile that could light a room up, a beautiful, uh, southern accent that all of us, uh, appreciated, but his wisdom and obviously the way he conducted himself, not only on the bench, but outside as well. Um, I would bump into him all over the state of Georgia as I would travel around the state, and he was, uh, just a person who loved Georgia and, uh, will, had ma, and made a significant contribution, uh, to this state, and we will certainly miss him. Uh, but more importantly, I think it's, uh, fitting that we do the resolution to send his family to recognize that the Senate is thinking of them in our thoughts and in our prayers, uh, and remembering, uh, the, uh, the wonderful contributions that, uh, Harris made. Helen, his wife, um, is doing, uh, quite well, I think, at this time, um, but our, our thoughts are certainly with the family, uh, in its entirety. And at this moment, I would ask the Senate to please join me in a moment of silence as we pray. Let us pray. Amen. Thank you all very, very much. Also, um, we had the passing of another dear colleague of ours in the House, John Meadows, uh, that served as the Rules Chairman. Uh, many of you all, uh, had the great privilege of going in front of him, uh, and asking for bills, uh, and, uh, all of you came to recognize that, uh, he was a wonderful, wonderful individual with a big heart, uh, had that marine instinct in him, uh, was competitive at the, to the very end. Uh, I had occasion to play golf with him, uh, many times, and he hated to lose, uh, and he would play, uh, very hard at everything that, uh, he did, certainly in golf, but, but in life as well. And, uh, he is a person that we all, um, grew to love, admire, value, and appreciate, and he will certainly be missed as well, and it would only be fitting for the Senate, uh, to recognize and commemorate the life of John Meadows and to think also, uh, in our thoughts and prayers of his family during this very difficult gre- difficult grieving time. I think it was 5:00 AM this morning that he passed, and he will certainly be missed, but he also will be recognized for all the great contributions that he's made to our state and certainly to his district. So at this time, I would ask the Senate to rise again as we have a moment of silence on behalf of Representative John Meadows. Let us pray. Senator from the 53rd, did you, you recognized this time. We will have a resolution for the Senator later, or Representative later.
Thank you, Mr. President. I come before you to speak of our good friend, Representative Johnny Meadows. John was a father, a husband, a mayor, representative, Chairman of the Rules, and a Marine. And on occasion, John and I would talk about the session, upcoming session, and also during the session, of some of his plans and some of his issues. And of course, he would always tell me that he's not sponsoring a bill, but if his name was the second on a bill, that was his bill. So he kept that very confidential for us. But working with John was very unique. As you know, he had that rough presence often, but underneath, as the President said, he was a tender-hearted man, a, a great public servant, took care of people, took care of his family. And I know they're going to need our prayers and our love while they go through this enduring situation that they're in. So, Mr. President, with that, I just wish John Meadows' family the very best, and we remember our colleague for the great public service that he gave us. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes Senator from the 52nd.
I too want to echo my sympathy for the Meadows family. Back in 1994, I bought a restaurant that I owned for 18 years, and I wasn't in politics until 98, but Chairman Meadows back then was the mayor of Calhoun, and he would come over every week and go in the back room of my restaurant, and we became great friends there. The future mayor, Jimmy Palmer, who is still the mayor there, he and John Meadows and their wives would come over every week, and, and we had great conversations together. It was a great honor to sponsor with him the hydraulic fracturing bill, the fracking bill, that the Senator from the 25th, the latest, maybe a year on getting out, but we were able to get it out this session. And he was very determined to protect the water sources up in northwest Georgia. From a selfish standpoint, I will miss going over to Rules and having him remind the House members that I was his Senator and to treat me accordingly. I, I'll lose that privilege at this point, but we have lost a great leader in the House, and I certainly wish him and all his family there in the Calhoun area the best. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes Senator from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to offer my condolences to the Meadows family. I remember very fondly on a couple of occasions that I had to go before his committee. I didn't know at the time, but when I got my chance to go before the committee, he, somebody whispered in his ear, and he looked back at me and said, "He was in the Marine Corps. Well, you know that bill is going to pass." So he, I actually made sure everybody got my bill passed, but more importantly, he was a great statements, and more importantly, a great Marine. So I say to him and his family, "Sempify. God bless."
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes Senator from the 45th. The gentle lady from Gwinnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I welcome everyone back, but this is, turns out to be a very solemn occasion, and I too pay my respects and talk about my love of Representative John Meadows. And I don't talk about him as a chairman, but I talk about him as a person, a person who cared very much for those that are disadvantaged. He also cared about the vulnerable people, population, whether it was young or old. But I come to the podium today to also talk about current events, and unfortunately, in Gwinnett County, we had the terrible, terrible tragedy of losing one of our finest, badge number 1808, Officer Antoine Tony. It has left an indelible mark on Gwinnett County's history when he was called to the scene in the south side of the county of answering a call that unknown people were in a car, and he walked up, answered the call, walked up to the car, and unfortunately was shot through the window. The window was not even raised down, put down, and he was shot through the window. And tragically, he was taken to Gwinnett Medical Hospital and died in the emergency department. So we had a, a beautiful, beautiful ceremony where people flew in from all over the country to honor his memory and historic occasion in Gwinnett County. It harkened back to the days of the 1960s where we had three police officers also killed. It also harkened back to Officer McGill that was killed at Jimmy Carter Boulevard back when I was the county commissioner in the 90s. So unfortunately, it's a rarity to have these police officers killed, and thank God it is. But we stand before them, and I, the Gwinnett County delegation will have a ceremony during our official session and have officers down, and I'm sure there'll be officers come from all over the state. He was a member not of the Sheriff's Department but of the Gwinnett County Police Department. So I ask for you to keep his family, who's in California, on your minds and in your prayers as we go through the holiday season, and hopefully we'll be able to have them back here. Thank you very much. I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes Senator from the 25th. Gentleman from Butts County.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to send my condolences to Judge Harris Hines. I've known Judge Hines for quite some time. His son and I played at the University of Georgia. Hat was a starting place kicker there at the University of Georgia. And thing I always loved about Judge Hines and, and his attitude on life, he never had a bad day. Those of you who, who knew him and, and got to interact with him, he was the exact same every time, and just a prince of a, of a, of a person. And it's so tragic what happened in the car accident, doing exactly what he and his wife were planning on doing the, the rest of their lives, and that was going to watch the grandchildren perform at various activities. And, and my condolences do go out to, to the Hines family, and because it is a, it is a sad, sad day because he was such a fine gentleman and such a great family and, and a good, and a great public servant to the state of Georgia as well. So I yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes Senator from 28th. Gentleman from Coweta County.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise today to, to honor the life of Justice Hines. He, you know, as we all know him, I mean, the man always had a smile, and, but I too want to speak to his wife and the, and the strength of Ms. Helen. You know, not only did she survive that crash, but, you know, we were, we were at the visitation last night, and, and she came up to me and said, "Matt, you know, Justice Hines, he felt good about retirement because of people like you willing to serve. He felt like this place was in good hands." And so I think that's a message to, to really each and every one of us, that great people went before us, and they feel, feel good in retirement because people like us are, are willing to serve. So, so for Justice Hines and Chairman Meadows, I think, let's have a good productive session and finish out this year strong. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes Senator from the 24th.
It is an honor to come and, and think of a loving memory of two great men, Justice Hines and John Meadows. Some of us in this body had the honor to serve with John Meadows on both sides, in the House and here in the Senate. And one of the things I loved about John Meadows was he could look at you and say a thousand words. He could really tell you, if you'd like to remind me of my daddy, he could tell you, talk to you just by looking at you. And also, I will always cherish and remember the times that he always told me, Senator or Representative, you do not have to come back to Rules no more. But just want to lift him up and lift just Chief Justice Hines up also. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. The next order of business is going to be our, the adoption of the rules for the special session. The Chair now recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that SR 1EX be engrossed.
Chair, or excuse me, the Majority Leader is moving for engrossment. Secretary will read the bill or resolution.
Senate Resolution 1EX by Senator Miller, the 49th. A resolution adopting the rules of the Senate for the 2018 Special Session of the General Assembly of Georgia and for other purposes. That completes the reading of the order.
The Senator has moved for engrossment of the rule, of the resolution. Is there objection? Without objection, the rules will be engrossed. Chair recognizes the present pro temp of the body, the Senator from the 49th, to speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the fact that we did not have objection to engrossment indicates the level of preparedness that this chamber has accomplished this morning. The resolution before you, and you all have copies of it, I'm confident each of you have read it, you understand it, and we're simply proposing rule changes that will help us conduct the state's business in an expedited manner while also maintaining the integrity of the legislative process. Mr. President, if there are no questions, I will yield the will.
Thank you, Senator. No questions. Any other Senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? Is there objection agreeing to report a committee which failed to pass the bill? Chair is none, report a committee is agreed to. All those in favor of the resolution will vote aye. Those opposed, no. Secretary will unlock the machine. the nays are zero, and the Senate has adopted SR 1EX. So we have a couple more. Secretary will read another resolution.
Senate Resolution 2EX by Senator Miller, the 49th. A resolution to notify the House of Representatives that the Senate has convened and for other purposes.
The only problem with that is I don't think the House comes in till 1:00. It's amazing how the Senate leads in every single area, you know what I mean? Ain't it amazing? You know? House members can't get up before 1:00. You know, we've already conducted our business before 1:00. Is there objection to adoption of the resolution to let the House know whenever they choose to come to this special session? Without objection, the resolution is therefore adopted. Secretary will read another resolution.
Senate Resolution 3EX. A resolution by Senator Miller, the 49th. A resolution to notify the Governor that the General Assembly has convened and for other purposes.
We know the Governor's at work, so we can notify him. Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? Chair here is none, and the resolution is adopted. We will have a committee that will serve as the notification to the Governor that the Senate has, is prepared to do its, its work. And at this time, I will appoint the following Senators as the Committee of Notification. Those Senators will consist of Senator from the 49th, Senator from the 4th, Senator from the 46th, Senator from the 41st, Senator from the 9th, Senator from the 20th, and Senator from the 17th. These will all serve as the Committee of Notification. Would ask that the committee meet upon adjournment at the rostrum to be escorted over to the Yeah, okay. Secretary has an announcement to read.
This is a memorandum from David Cook, the Secretary of the Senate regarding Governor's appointments pursuant to Rule, Senate Rule 3-3.1. I am notifying the Senate that the appointments made by the Governor that require Senate confirmation have been received and referred to the Committee on Assignments. They are attached to the memo on your desk for review. The Committee on Assignments will report its recommendations on the appointments to the Senate, after which the Senate may proceed to consider confirmation.
Governor's appointees to be confirmed by the Senate, all of those should be on your desk, and those will be taken up at a later date. Chair recognizes Senator from the 38th, what purpose do you rise?
Mr. President, looking at this, I'm not sure which page it's on, but we have on the top of page, oh, I don't know. It starts with Jim Lynch. It lists his beginning term as May 8th of 2021, and his ending term is May 8th of 2021. I was wondering if that happened to be, and the next couple of people the same way, if that's, happens to be a typo of some sort for the term to begin and end at the same time.
This is just the way the Governor obviously sent it. It is in, in the body right now of the Committee on Assignments, and we will take that, that issue up in terms of the question the Senator is asking. I mean, we just may strike him altogether just because of the, you know, complexity of the issue.
Well, Mr. President, you've also got the next person, Jimmy Peterson, and then you have...
We'll take, you know...
You'll take all of them, okay.
We'll take, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that that's...
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
...in the right way. Chair recognizes Senator from the 11th for an announcement.
I want to stand and say a personal thank you to the governor for calling this special session to recognize the severity of the damages in southwest Georgia related to Hurricane Michael. I also want to personally thank the President of this body for his reaching out to me to let me know that he's praying for me and the people in my district. And I want to say a personal thank you, and I won't list all of you because I'd have to go through just about every number in the body here, but so many of you reached out to me and asked what you could do and let me know that you were thinking about me and my district, and I want to personally thank you for that. And I want you to, to thank you in ahead of time for the work that this body will do this week to help those who have suffered what is hard for me at my age to say was the most catastrophic event that I've ever been through personally, and the folks in southwest Georgia and, again, the people in northwest Florida will be suffering for years from this catastrophic weather event, and I want to ask you guys to continue to keep them in your prayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator, and we certainly will. Southwest Georgia was hit really, really hard, and a lot of devastation and a lot recovery yet to come forth. That will conclude our business. Is there any other member that would like to be recognized this time? If not, the Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, November 14.
The Majority Leader has moved that this body stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, November the 14th, 2018. All of those in favor will say aye. All those opposed, no.[1742.24][1742.24](Ayes, ayes). Oh, without question, the ayes clearly have it. The Senate stands adjourned.